Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for joining us. This is the Commissioner meeting of October 12th, 2022 at 6:00 p.m. here at Sussex County Community Colleges Performing Arts Center in Newton, New Jersey. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask Susie to please call the roll.
Commissioner Carney.
Here.
Commissioner Fantasia.
Here.
Director Fazano.
Here.
Commissioner Space.
Here.
Commissioner Yardley.
Here. Is the speaker system on? Do you have a speaker over there?
I don't have a speaker.
You don't have one? Okay.
Sorry, I'll try to speak louder.
Okay.
No problem. Everybody's here. Item three on our agenda is our moment of silence and salute to the flag. We'd like to ask for you all to remember retired Byram Township Police Chief Skip Danielson, who passed away on October 3rd, 2022. Skip also served as the Sussex County Director of Division of Emergency Management, and our thoughts are with the Danielson family today. So if you can please rise with me for a salute to the flag and a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 PL 1975, adequate notices defined by Section 3D of Chapter 231 PL 1975 has been made by regular mail and email. Such notice being submitted on January 5th, 2022, from the Administrative Center of the County of Sussex, located at One Spring Street, Newton, New Jersey, to the following: The New Jersey Herald, The Star-Ledger, WSUS Radio, and WNNJ Radio, and is also posted on the bulletin board maintained in the Administrative Center for public announcements, and has been submitted to the Sussex County Clerk in compliance with said act. At this time, we'd like to remind all to mute your electronic devices. Item five on our agenda is the approval of our agenda, and prior to tonight's approval, there will be a few additional items added to our executive session resolution. Item number five will be 2020-22, 2020-23 budget and ARPA projects. Item number seven will be the Dennis Library as number one, American Rock Assault Contract as number two, CWA Premium Pay Grievance as number three, Shared Service Agreement, Hunterdon County Health Officer as number four. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Still moved.
Commissioner Carney moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Fantasia seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? The motion carries. Item six, we have no proclamations or presentations this evening. We also have no public hearings this evening. Item seven. Item eight on our agenda is our first public session from the floor. This public session is for those wishing to make a comment of three minutes or less regarding an agenda item. Please line up at the microphone and maintain six feet social distance with other attendees. State your name, your municipality, and the agenda topic for the record. Is there a motion to open the floor for public comment this evening?
Still moved.
Commissioner Carney moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Space seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? The motion carries, and the floor is now open for public comment regarding agenda items only. Is there anyone who wishes to be heard? Hearing none, is there a motion to close the floor for public comment?
Still move.
Commissioner Fantasia moves. Commissioner Carney seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? The motion carries. Item nine for Commissioner comments, as always, will start to my left with Commissioner Space.
Thank you. I'll be brief today. Division of Senior Services, the 2022 Caregiver Expo. The Division of Senior Services will host its annual Caregiver Expo at the Farmstead Golf and Country Club, located at 88 Lawrence Road in Lafayette, from 3:30 to 6:30 on Thursday, October 20th. This event is designed to offer resources and support to caregivers. There will be a variety of health and human services providers, businesses, and organizations that cater to the needs of seniors and their caregivers. To register your attendance or obtain additional information, please call the Division of Senior Services at 973-579-0555, extension 1277. Center for Lifelong Learning presentation in October here at SCCC. The Center for Lifelong Learning will host a free art presentation in the atrium of the Performing Arts Center at Sussex County Community College at 3:00 p.m. on Friday, October 21st. Join Art Professor Michael Hughes to explore Rembrandt and the art of the self-portrait. To register your attendance or obtain additional information, please contact the Division of Senior Services at 973-579-0555, extension 1277. And the Skylands Ride Transit, there is a resolution on the agenda tonight for Skylands Ride to receive annual grant funding for the Senior Citizens and Disabled Residents Transportation Assistance Program and the 5311 program through New Jersey Transit. Skylands Ride will utilize this funding to continue providing public transportation throughout the county and trips for life-saving treatments such as dialysis, medical appointments, employment, grocery shopping, and other essential services for Sussex County seniors and individuals with disabilities. For 2023, Skylands Ride will be receiving a 38% increase in funding for senior citizen transportation for a total of $574,338, and a 23% increase in funding for rural transportation for a total of $711,949. To schedule transportation or obtain additional information about Skylands Ride, call 973-579-0480. And I'm looking forward to joining the Budget Committee with Commissioner Carney, and we start the hearings on Friday. And of course, Elka, she does a great job keeping the budget low, which we're hoping we'll be able to do that again with the upcoming inflation that we're seeing in everything. But it's very important to keep up with all the services that the county provides, and we have a board that looks out for the taxpayer, and we're going to make sure that we can do everything that we can to keep the county running smoothly. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Space. Commissioner Fantasia.
Thank you. I'll start with information from the Sussex County Division of Health. They are offering flu and high-dose flu vaccines, along with the COVID-19 vaccines and boosters. The clinics are being held below on the following dates: at the Freedom Civic Center on Saturday, October 15th, that's this Saturday, from 10:00 to 1:00; at the Sussex Wantage Library on Wednesday, October 19th, from 10:00 to 1:00; Our Lady of Fatima Church in Highland Lakes, Wednesday, October 26th, from 10:00 to 1:00; and in Knoll Heights in Sparta on Saturday, October 29th, from 10:00 to 1:00. The COVID-19 vaccines are available as walk-ins, no cost, and appointments are required to receive the flu or high-dose flu vaccine. You can schedule an appointment on our website, sussex nj.us backslash flu. You can complete your consent form in advance or obtain additional information on our website. Please keep in mind, public health nursing is providing weekly homebound vaccinations as well for those who are not mobile. So free at-home COVID testing still continues through the County of Sussex. Again, visit the website. You can schedule an at-home test through either LabCorp or Vault. So New Jersey Department of Health reports that Sussex County remains at a medium code yellow level of COVID. The variants are just about 100% Omicron. For the past week, we have been reporting roughly 41 daily cases. And as far as hospitalizations in October thus far, we were at 17. To give you a little reference, in September, we were at 50, August 46, July 35. So we seem to be in the exact zone that we have remained in for the past several months. But again, please schedule your flu vaccine through the county if you wish. Just a couple of small updates, myself, all the commissioners actually. We attended the 102nd Annual Sussex County Fireman's Parade in Franklin. It was a beautiful day, represented by every department in the county, multiple departments in the region, and some from out of state as well, Pennsylvania and New York. It was a really, really wonderful day celebrated in Franklin Borough. Our next week upcoming, we have our NJAC, that's the New Jersey Association of Counties meeting, that they've established for North Jersey, and North Jersey commissioners are invited. I know I myself am attending. I believe Commissioner Yardley. I'm not sure if the board, you know, the entire board is going, but it's nice that we are having these regional meetings now, so we get to meet with the commissioners from the northern part of the state and share what kind of challenges and successes that we are having. I also was invited to be a member of a New Jersey Parent Advisory Panel for schools and curriculum, and that's in partnership with Warren County and Commissioner Director Jason Sarnoski, so I'll be attending that on Monday evening, this upcoming Monday evening as well. And again, Commissioner Yardley and I are serving on the Capital Budget Committee, and we have confirmed dates with Christine about how we get that on our calendar and get that situated prior to the close of this year, so we have those dates established. We're looking forward to reviewing the capital budget proposals. I have a fair amount of updates from the Sussex County Arts and Heritage Council. I get a quarterly update from them, so I could tell you about their most recent exhibition, but I can give you a little color on what's happened over the past few months. The good news, the New Jersey State Council on the Arts announced its funding support award letter to our county in the amount of $200,000 for 2023, and that's actually excellent for us. And the New Jersey Historical Commission announced its funding support letter of an additional $46,000 for fiscal year '23. So that's actually very, very positive news for us. Also, there are ongoing extensive preparations for the Heritage Council's ongoing, or I'm sorry, annual fundraiser, the Roaring Twenties Gala Extraordinaire. It'll be at the Lafayette House on December 9th, 2022, so please check the Heritage Council's Facebook page, their website, and the county website as well, because we will continue to promote this. The office staff and board members continue to solicit donations and canvas for support in the community. And I would like to share with you a call for artists, and it's coming up this week. The Sussex County Arts and Heritage Council and the Sussex County Branch of the American Association of University Women are cosponsoring an exhibition celebrating the creativity of women. So it is a joint exhibit with this organization. It's open to all female artists, and entries in all art forms are available. They're accepting 2D work, 3D work, original writings and poetry. You can enter songs, excerpts from books, and recordings from verse or song. So that is open to anyone 18 years of age or older. So there's some important dates here. They are accepting your entries at the gallery on Spring Street on October 14th and 15th. So that's this Friday and this Saturday. So Friday, you can drop off your entries from 11:00 to 4:00 p.m., and on Saturday, you can go to the gallery on Spring Street and drop off from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. So if you visit their website, you can click for the actual entry form and all the details. But if you are a female artist or know an artistic female in your life and would like to have your work submitted for this, please, please do so. I love the fact that our Arts and Heritage Council really does have open exhibitions for residents in the county, and then they really tailor to specific groups. They have a youth exhibition. They tailor to senior citizens. We compete at the state level. So with this increased funding and with the new executive director, I see a lot of movement, a lot of good things coming out of the Arts and Heritage Council. And the last update is kind of county slash state update. If you recall, in 2020, we were at significant risk of having the school-based youth services programs cut here in Sussex County for mental health support for our students. There was an incredibly strong pushback and outcry, and multiple letters, lots of pressure put on the governor's administration to not cut funding for that. Well, lo and behold, that there is a proposal from Governor Murphy to eliminate the funding across the state for this program as of June 30th, 2023. Now, to tell you a little bit about school-based youth services programs, these programs have been in existence since 1988, and they serve 25,000 to 30,000 students each and every year, and the program is directly responsible for saving countless lives. There's only a two-week comment period allowed by the state, and we'll push that information out to you where you can offer comments on this. So I can tell you here in Sussex County, Sussex County Technical School operates the school-based youth services program, and they provide onsite mental health and psychiatric services, and they also provide medical and dental services and screenings, recreation, and a safe place for youth, among many other programs. Now, there's a proposed new program under Governor Murphy that will create 15 mental health hubs across the state utilizing the funding that's currently used for the school-based youth services program. So if I'm doing the math, there's 21 counties in New Jersey, and let's all look back and reflect on which counties usually do not get the servicing and the support if we are doing 15 hubs, because to me, I interpret that, and I'm not alone in my interpretation here, that we may have a northern regional, keep in mind, I'm not saying one of 15 won't be in the north, but one that is county-specific, I highly doubt, considering, what are we, the fourth smallest county? And Sussex County, again, is 565 square miles, which proposes a transportation difficulty for students to be able to access some of these services. So if we're served through a regional county hub, this would leave our students at a serious disadvantage to receiving their critical mental health services. And again, once you take these services out of a school, there's not necessarily services that are within the community and we would be referring out, and there may be difficulty in students being able to access these services if they are out of county. So my slant on the situation here is that the governor needs to pony up. Why 15 hubs? Why not 21? And we've done this dance before. Distance, lack of public transportation, landmass alone are all reasons why we need a hub here in Sussex County, and we want the program to remain in the school. And the best news of all is that the governor is so proud of himself, patting himself on the back for all the extra cash that we're flush with, that I see no problem whatsoever with the millions of additional cash he touts to be able to give us our hub here in Sussex County and indeed leave the school-based youth services programs that are successfully thriving in the state of New Jersey and here in Sussex County alone. He has the money, no need for pet projects. Let's put our money where our mouth is. Mental health was a serious concern, never more than after COVID, so let's get something done for our residents. So my ask tonight from this board is to please support Christine Florio. We had a very detailed conversation about this this week as well, in requesting that the program remains in place and with the creation of hubs, that there are not 15 hubs, that there are 21 hubs dedicated, one in each county, for additional mental health support. So not in lieu of, but in addition to. So if the board is agreeable to that, to review a letter that's proposed by Christine Florio.
We have one tonight.
Perfect. I love that story very, very much, and we can move forward with that. Let's hope. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Fantasia. Commissioner Yardley.
Thank you, Anthony. Very insightful. Thank you, Dawn, for that information. Public health, there's a child health conference on Tuesday, October 18th, and that's for children, physical exam screenings, age-appropriate immunizations for children from birth to five years old. And that's if you have no insurance or you know someone that does not have insurance and needs those services, they can be referred to the Office of Public Health Nursing.
Can you just talk into the microphone a little bit more? We're having a hard time hearing you.
Hello.
That's perfect.
Okay. There'll be a child conference that is a public health service that provides immunizations for children that are from birth to five years old that are without health insurance. And you can make an appointment by calling the Public Health Nursing Services, and this information is online, and so if you know somebody that needs that service, it would be great to put them in that direction. There'll be a general health clinic on Tuesday, October 18th, from 2:00 to 4:00, at the Office of Public Health Nursing at Wheatworth Road. There's no fee for vaccinations if uninsured or underinsured. The clinic also offers a variety of health screenings. And again, that's at the Public Health Nursing Office in Wheatworth Road. A women's health clinic will be Thursday, October 20th, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. There have been 49 rabies investigations, and I've looked at this report for some time, and I see things on here like bats, raccoons, groundhog, fox, squirrel, skunk. Can we get a report? I think what I would like to have with addition to this report is whether we had a rabies exposure and did people have to go for rabies? If we could get something like that, so to put things in perspective. I'd also would like to know, has there been an outreach to educate the schools? I know that the schools get inundated with many things. However, I don't see what the ages are here, but many times communicating and educating the youth, they can go home with pamphlets if it's something like that, to let their parents know, you know, don't go outside and chase that skunk or squirrel outside. I apologize to the board. Senior Services, there'll be a caregiver group at the Hope Hackon Community Research and Wellness Center, 5:30 to 6:30 p.m. on Tuesday, October 18th. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Yardley. Deputy Director Carney.
Thank you, Director. I will be brief tonight, because I know we have a long executive session. I thought Commissioner Fantasia was going to bring up the bear, so just for a reference, I have a new bear pet, a bigger one in my yard now. Comes about every two days. You know, that problem. Couple things with engineering. We had an emergency drainage repair notice. That's for County Route 616, also known as Newton-Sparta Road. Emergency drainage repairs are at mile marker 1.3 plus or minus. The result is a pipe failing under the road, and it's settled, creating a sinkhole. In the interest of the public safety, that road will be closed to traffic on about today for night work, weather permitting. Work will be conducted under a complete road closure, so that work will be during 7:00 to 5:00 a.m., again, starting today or tomorrow. We do have some completion notices, which is always nice. 655 Morris Turnpike Frankfurt, that construction, the guide rail upgrades, is complete, and we have one more completion, replacement of Bridge D-35 over the Dry Brook in Frankfurt as well. That is complete, and that was done in-house by our construction, Bridge Department, which is always nice, because that saves the county a lot of money. It is my dream in the future to do about two or three of these bridges a year. Obviously, we need the manpower to do that, so, you know, we got to spend money to save money. That is a dream that I have, along with Bill Copenall, our county engineer. I wanted to go over something that we probably haven't done, and Anthony's going to continue with this, but the American Rescue Plan funds that we had, we've been working pretty hard on that. There's a lot of variables and decisions and how we could spend money, but I just wanted to go over this with the public, because I don't think we have done this yet. We were awarded $27,288,147. As of now, we've committed to $12,875,206.24. We have spent $3,839,986.24. We have encumbered 768,485.27. I like the 27 cents. Okay, I like all the, to the penny. Very, very, very good. And just to go over a few of these things, we have some money towards homeless prevention, small business programs with, again, Anthony will be going over after I'm done here. We had a meeting today. And transit bus replacements, which we are in dire need of. If you've ever seen our buses in the county, they don't belong here. They belong in a dump. So that's where we got a lot of money allocated. We're going to have a meeting in about a week or two to continue this process and spend some of this money. Again, it's not as easy as you would think. If it was my money, I could spend it, it would ease, but it's not. This happens, this will never happen probably in our lifetime again, getting this much money. So we have to allocate it in the right, with the right decisions made. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Director Carney, and thanks to all who are joining us this evening. It's been a really busy few days here in Sussex County, but I first wanted as well to thank the organizers and the attendees of the 102nd Annual Sussex County Fireman's Inspection Day and Parade recently in Franklin for having us. The Franklin Fire Department always does a fantastic job with that. It was a great event where we honored and celebrated all of Sussex County's firefighters, and it was a privilege to be there. This morning, I had the chance to stop right down the block here at Project Self-Sufficiency and attend their Young Leadership Council meeting, and I continue to be just really impressed at the work that Project Self-Sufficiency is doing and the tremendous impact that they are having in helping those who need it in our communities. As you can imagine, the need for these services have only increased over the last two years or so, and Project Self-Sufficiency is one great example of an organization that we have here in the county that continues to meet the challenge of helping our residents receive the assistance they need. They have plenty of upcoming events over the next few months, including a career fair, a health fair, a Thanksgiving food drive, and my favorite event that they put on, the Season of Hope Toy Shop. To learn more, please, please visit projectselfsufficiency.org. As Deputy Director Carney mentioned, this afternoon, I attended what I thought was a really productive meeting with Tammy Horsefield from the Sussex County Chamber of Commerce, our county administrative leadership, Elka, and Ron as well, to discuss our plans and next steps on laying out Sussex County's Small Business Assistance Program. After our meeting this afternoon, I am confident that this program will be up and running within weeks, with information being available on how to apply right on our website, and of course, with the assistance of the Sussex County Chamber of Commerce. The Sussex County Board of County Commissioners have dedicated a portion of our allocated American Rescue Plan Act funding to support our county's small business and nonprofit organizations as they struggle to meet the challenges posed by the pandemic and the resulting unpredictable fluctuations in our national and local economies. Small businesses and nonprofit organizations remain the economic backbone of our county, and we're providing this opportunity for direct financial assistance to ensure their survival, their recovery, and their ultimate success. More details on our business community, for our business community, on our Small Business Assistance Program, including where to find more information, will be coming shortly, and I know we're all here excited about the impact this program can have in Sussex County. Commissioner Fantasia and I, we're very much on the same page when very recently, we've been made aware of a seemingly rapidly developing item taking place in the governor's office that seriously threatens school-based youth services programs. And I understand that there is only about a two-week comment period allowed by the state as outlined in their communications, which is why this item has come to us so quickly. Tonight, as Commissioner Fantasia mentioned, I will be asking the board to consider formal action, urging Governor Murphy with the utmost urgency and sincerity to reconsider the elimination of funding for school-based youth services programs across the state as of June 30th, 2023, as he is proposing to do. These programs have existed since 1988. They serve the unique needs of nearly 30,000 students each year, including students right here in our communities and in our neighborhoods. The Sussex County Technical School operates the school-based youth services program locally. They provide onsite local mental health and psychiatric services, medical and dental services, among many other important programs needed for our local students. They also provide recreation, safety, and simply a place for our students to get assistance nearby, which is now very much at risk. As Commissioner Fantasia mentioned, this proposed new program under Governor Murphy will create 15 mental health hubs across the state. will create 15 mental health hubs across the entire state, utilizing funding currently used for school-based youth services programs to pay for it. And there is a deep, deep, deep concern that Sussex County will not receive funding for a mental health hub of its own, and that services will be provided to Sussex County students through a larger county hub located somewhere else, potentially leaving our students at a serious disadvantage to receive critical mental health services. Additionally, there is a real concern that once these services are removed from Sussex County, there simply won't be adequate services to refer our students to within our community, and nor will our students be able to physically access them as easily. This matter couldn't be any more urgent for Sussex County and the students who utilize this. I will be reading a letter in our new business portion of our program and asking for the board's support so that we can send it to Governor Murphy. And I do want to thank Christine Florio for her excellent work on bringing this to our attention because it is that important. So I wanted to thank you personally for helping us along on this. So we need to get moving on that, so I'm going to shut up. And I did just want to mention before we close our commissioner comments that our October 26th meeting will likely be canceled, and a new meeting date will be advertised in accordance with the law, of course. That concludes my report. We're going to be moving to Item 10 on our agenda, which is the approval of our consent agenda. There are a number of items there. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda items A through M as in Mary?
So moved.
Commissioner Space moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Yardley seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Item 11 on our agenda is the approval of our minutes from our regular meeting of September 28th. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Commissioner Fantasia moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Carney seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. We have no appointments or resignations this evening. Item 13 is our resolutions portion. Is there a motion to adopt our Resolutions 13A through E?
So moved.
Commissioner Carney moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Space seconds. Any discussion? Susie, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Director Fazano?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Thank you. Item 14 on our agenda is the awards of contract change orders and bids. The Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex has reviewed the awards of contract change orders and bids consisting of various proposed resolutions and determined that adoption of said resolutions is in and will further the public interest. Is there a motion to adopt Resolutions A and B?
Make the motion.
Commissioner Yardley moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Fantasia seconds. Susie, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Director Fazano?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Item 15, 15A, is the approval of Bills List A. Do I have a motion to approve Bills List A?
So moved.
Commissioner Fantasia moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Carney seconds. Any discussion? Susie, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Director Fazano?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Abstain.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
And Item B is the approval of Bills List B. Do we have that motion?
So moved.
Commissioner Space moves. Commissioner Carney seconds. Any discussion? Susie, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Director Fazano?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Thank you. Item 16, we have no personnel agenda this evening. Item 17, our administrative report. Mr. Tappan?
Thank you, sir. I'll be real brief. I know we've got a lot of work to do tonight, but I continue to go around to all the offices of the borough and introduce and reintroduce myself to employees. I was at Public Health Nursing today, and it was great to see them. They were preparing for their flu clinic at Thor Lab, so they were very busy getting that put together, but it was good to see everybody there. I went over to Social Services and met with them this week, and, you know, they're all saints and angels over there. The work they do over there is just, it's phenomenal. It really is. What they do on a day-to-day basis is out of this world. I stopped at a couple of work zones this week and talked to the guys, and I inspected their work zones, and I'm proud to say that our crews do a world-class setup on their work zones. And that's not just so that the public can transport and traffic through these work zones. This is as much as not more important for the safety of the employees. That, I told them, I really appreciated the way they did it, that I always want them to go home in the same condition that they came in, and that we tell them to work in places where we tell our kids not to play. And that's very important to me, that they do that in a very, 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 very good way. And then lastly, yes, we got budgets to, I just can't say enough about Elka and Mary Lee. As a point of record, all these nice books that you see here that you've got delivered today, Mary Lee on Monday, when the rest of the county was out on a holiday, she was in here printing those books. We have stellar staff that I'm very proud to be a part of. So that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Tappan. Appreciate that. County Council report, anything from you, Mr. Steinhardt?
Only that we're still on track for our November 28th oral argument on the Oprah suits against the state.
Thank you, Council. Item 19, do we have any unfinished business this evening? Okay, we'll move to Item 20 for new business.
I have new business.
You have new business?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
We are entertaining the possibility of us sponsoring the next regional meeting for next year, and we do have the opportunity to do that.
An NJAC regional meeting?
With NJAC, at no cost to the county. Just sponsor that meeting.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, no cost to the county. Sponsor that.
Thank you, Herb. So I'd like to carry on with the elimination of Sussex County's School-Based Youth Services Program and read at this point what is a draft letter from us to the governor and ask for the board's commentary and approval to send it. This letter is titled Elimination of Sussex County School-Based Youth Services Program, and it reads as follows. Dear Governor Murphy, the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners would like to express our deepest concerns regarding the reallocation of funds previously awarded to the school-based youth services program. The decision to replace this successful program, which has been in operation for over 30 years, serving more than 25,000 students across the state each year, is ill-considered, short-sighted, and does not take into consideration the critical components of the program nor the specific needs of each county in the state. In Sussex County, the School-Based Youth Services Program, which operates out of the Sussex County Technical School, provides a comprehensive array of onsite mental health and social services for students at risk or in crisis. This includes individual counseling sessions, in addition to free onsite psychiatric evaluations and risk assessments for issues such as substance abuse and medication monitoring. This program supports the student's mental, behavioral, emotional, and physical health so that they can be academically successful, achieve job readiness skills, and obtain the social skills needed to transition into adulthood and become contributing members of the community. A huge component of its success is the in-school access to critical mental health services and interventions. The elimination of this program, combined with the severe shortage of mental health services available for youth in Sussex County, will leave vulnerable students without access to immediate comprehensive services, leaving them exposed to potential risks, including suicide. The proposed model would be highly exclusionary of those students in rural communities such as Sussex, where geographic proximity would determine and predict the extent to which they could access necessary mental health services. On behalf of the approximately 800 students who have access to the school-based youth services program in Sussex County, in addition to the thousands of former students who have benefited from its services, the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners asks that you reconsider the elimination of this program. Sincerely, the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners. Are there any comments?
I think you should, I do. Dawn, you want to talk?
Go ahead.
Okay. I just can say, the letter sounds direct to the.
The letter sounds direct and to the point, and I think we should send that, and I think we should also ask the governor, excuse me, Steve Orho's office to follow up with a letter with that also. I think it's an important issue. I think Dawn made all of the points of why this service is continually needed in the county, and I totally support that, and I think it's a good letter.
If I'd written, I may have chosen different language, but I think that it serves its purpose as is. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Fantasia.
You can entertain a motion, Director, if you want.
Yes.
Is there any additional discussion or there's amendments?
Thank you. So can I have a motion for this letter's submission?
So moved.
Commissioner Space moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Carney seconds. Any discussion or edits? Do I need a roll call?
No, I would just, you have a question, please.
Okay. Hearing no further comments, Susie, can you please call the roll to send this letter?
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Director Fazano?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Thank you, and we'll get this letter sent out right away with urgency. Are there any other new business items? Item 21 is our second and final public session from the floor. This public session is for those wishing to make general comments of three minutes or less regarding non-agenda topics. Please line up at the microphone and maintain a six-feet social distance with other attendees, and when you arrive, state your name and municipality for the record. Is there a motion to open the floor for public comment this evening?
Still moved.
Commissioner Carney moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Fantasia seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? The floor is now open for public comment. Is there anyone who wishes to be heard this evening? Hearing none, is there a motion to close the floor for public comment and return to regular business?
So moved.
Commissioner Space moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Carney seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Item 22 on our agenda is our reminders, and as always, please, please, please check the county's website at sussex nj.us for meeting schedules and the latest updates and all things Sussex County. Item 23 is our executive session resolution. Usually, we have our clerk read that, but we've kind of trapped Susie back there, so I'm going to read it this evening. Whereas the subject matters about to be discussed may be excluded from the public portion of the meeting by resolution of the Board of County Commissioners as an exception to the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to NJSA 10:4-12B, and whereas it appears necessary for the Board of County Commissioners to discuss such matters in executive session. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex, in accordance with the provisions of NJSA 10:4-12B and NJSA 10:4-13, that the Board at this time enter into executive session, from which the public shall be excluded, and be further resolved that the general nature of the subjects to be discussed relate to the following items authorized by NJSA 10:4-12/B as designated below. Item 5, matters relating to the purchase, lease, and acquisition of real property or the investment of public funds, 2020/22 budget ARPA projects. Item 7, matters relating to litigation negotiations and the attorney-client privilege as the dentist's library, American rock salt contract, CWA premium pay grievance, shared services agreement with 100 and County Health Officer, and personnel matters. Be it further resolved that the deliberations conducted in closed session may be disclosed to the public upon the determination of the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners or provided by law that the public interest will no longer be served by such confidentiality, and be it further resolved that upon completion of the business for which the Board has entered into executive session, the Board shall reconvene and resume its meeting open to the public, and be it further resolved that the Board expects not to take formal action after returning from executive session, except to adjourn the regular meeting. Is there a motion to adopt the executive session resolution and enter into executive session this evening?
So moved.
Commissioner Fantasia moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Carney seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? We'll move into executive session. Thank you so much. Get home safe. Thank you.